Please don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.fourtyninthcounty.com.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for everyone here tonight. Lord, we've gathered this council throughout this meeting. May your will be done in Christ's name. Pray amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, that ain't fair. I'd like to welcome everybody to the April sixteenth. City Council meeting. First item on the agenda is approval of a minute from April twenty ninth. They asked for motion to approve of a minute. If anybody's got any questions, we'll have them recorded or any comments. Make a motion. Second.
Second.
All in favor? Next item on the agenda is results of alcohol meeting posting. The public carry-in was today at five o'clock. For all y'all familiar with that public carry-in, the alcohol committee recommends that they had a public carry-in because alcohol committee recommend to approve the application submitted by the Hampton Inn for sale of alcohol. At Hampton Inn up here on one twenty-nine. Type licenses is oh-four zero dash retail beer on or off premises and type licenses oh-six oh retail table wine on or off premises at the Hampton Inn. It comes, like I said, a recommendation from the alcohol committee to go ahead and grant them an okay by license to do that. This is draft beer sales? Is that the okay? No, that's a different subject. Okay. They're asking to be able to serve beer at the Hampton Inn. Second. All in favor? Next item on the agenda is draft beer sales. I felt like we need to discuss this because it's been asked in the last six months, two or three times if draft beer was allowed to be sold in the city limits of Winfield. At first, my first thinking on it that it were legal to sell draft beer, but after further research and based on what you is going through with the Holiday Inn to sell draft beer, we're not set up to where we can allow to sell licenses for draft beer sales in the city of Winfield. And the reason I think that we, I wanted to bring it up for discussion is because of the fact that I've had two or three different ones ask if it would take a buy license to sell draft beer in the city of Winfield. It's different ones checking on, you know, like putting in the sports grill or whatever at the interstate or whatever if draft beer sales would be allowed. At this time, we're not allowed. And I need to know from the council if that's something that we need to move forward with, allow draft beer sales. If it is, if we do want to move forward with selling, allowing to sell licenses for draft beer, we need to act on it to get it into legislation, to get the legislators to okay the sale of draft beer in the city. Now Todd's a little more up on the alcohol requirements that we went through to start with the sale of alcohol. Some cities under certain populations is different than others above a certain population. Todd, if you've got anything to add to that, if I'm out lined and you tell me that we are legal, then we don't need to, you know, take any kind of action before, but we're not, we need to.
Now, we get, it requires a local act specifically authorizing the city of Winfield to sell draft beer. Because the act, the enabling act that gave us the authority to vote on the sale of alcohol does not allow us to sell draft beer. Only, only, as I understand it, and I don't say in all situations, but as I understand it, the only way you can sell, the only municipalities that can sell draft beer, all have got a local act passed that authorizes the sale of draft beer. What that would require is that the council, the city council would need to adopt a resolution asking our legislative delegation to pass a local act authorizing the sale of draft beer in city Winfield. And generally, if you, the council adopts that resolution and presents it to our legislative delegation, they will, they will follow through on that. And there's generally no opposition in Montgomery because it's a local act that applies to Winfield. If the local legislative delegation won't, then everybody else goes along with it. But that's the process to go through. And I'm assuming because it's Winfield city limits, Mayor, I'm assuming that that delegation would be Tracy Cowell South because he has some of city limits in his district, doesn't he? And Senator Studdes.
Correct.
It would be all three of them. We have actually three that we'd have to deal with. That would be technically our legislative delegation. We'd need to send the resolution to them.
And best, my knowledge, with the reasoning for it included to start with is, is based on it. It was left out of the previous alcohol sales reasoning for wine, wines that separate from the other. Being able to sell Jack Daniels or whiskey and beer, what, it's finding the difference of wine that draft beer was separate?
I, I don't know exactly why it was separate, but I do know that the legislation that authorizes us to sell alcohol did not authorize us to include draft beer. So it's not something that we could simply do under the, under the legislation that authorized us to vote on it. We actually have to pass a local act. Birmingham had to pass a local act to sell draft beer. Tuscaloosa, when I was looking at this at your request, all these places that sell draft beer had to actually get a local act before they could sell it. I suspect it has something to do with the taxation, with it, with being able to monitor and tax the beer differently or, you know, keep up with the quantity served or, I don't know what it is. But it's just not covered for some, for whatever reason, it's not covered. And that's, this is the way you have to do it.
I'm not a big alcohol person, but is there any difference in the way that alcohol affects anybody in draft beer versus wine, whiskey or beer?
Actually, actually, most draft beer by weight or volume has less alcohol content than bottled beer. A twelve ounce, a twelve ounce draft beer has less alcohol generally than a twelve ounce bottle. Just if you test it. So there's no more alcohol content by volume in draft than there is in a bottle beer. A draft Michelob Ultra, twelve ounce Michelob Ultra would have the same alcoholic content or maybe even lower than, than a bottle of Michelob Ultra of twelve ounces. So I, I think it has something to do with regulation because of the, the purchasing of, you got to buy them in kegs. And you're buying them in larger quantities as opposed to, you know, and I think it has something to do with enforcement and taxing is really what it was, what it was designed for.
Yeah, I'd say we're probably a big difference because it's not as a big a market as beer in cans is like Pepsi or Coca-Cola, all that's kind of regulated per can through a distributor. Where keg beer would probably be not regulated that way and that hard liquor, I call it, is the whiskey and different things would go through ABC store. All that's regulated through the Alabama Bureau of Alcohol Tobacco, that kind of.
Yes. And, but now, one of the things that I, I think, and Chief, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but if we get this local act that, that authorizes us to sell draft beer in Winfield, is it, does it then become legal for private citizens to go purchase a keg of beer?
From my understanding.
So you don't have to, the purchase of a keg of beer would be, would be lawful. It wouldn't necessarily be unlawful for an individual. Not saying anybody in Winfield could sell keg beer, but a person in Winfield could possess a keg of beer and it not be unlawful, where it might be now because of the quantity.
Correct.
Okay. From an enforcement standpoint, I see that as the only real difference, Mayor, is that the possession of a keg of beer is not, would, would, would not be unlawful.
So, has anybody got any questions for Todd? Everybody kind of understand where we at? What I'm, what I'm bringing before you because if it don't go in this legislation, this is going to be next year before you build. You know, if you don't get it in for legislation, legislators to act on it, try to get a bill passed to allow it, it'll be another year before you do it. That's why I wanted to bring it, bring you up to speed that we're not allowed to sell, sell licenses for keg beer.
So Mayor, if a business decided to do this, Mayor, whichever who wants to answer the question, what would be the fees on top of that for a business to purchase a, you know, a major license so to speak? Who sets that up?
I guess we would have to go back and in our license schedule, change it for draft beer sales. We don't have anything that addresses that. We'd have to go back and we, we, the council would go back into our alcohol ordinance and set the fees and schedules and everything for the sale of, of draft beer and the money we charge, the taxation we charge on each keg that was sold or each keg that was purchased and consumed, things like that.
But then on our alcohol ordinance, we pretty much mimic what the state had started.
Yes.
We probably could mimic what they've got for draft beer sales in other counties, other cities.
In other municipalities, yes. We could, we, we wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel. We could look to, you know, Tuscaloosa authorizes the sale of draft beer. We could look to see what their alcohol that says regarding the fees and the schedules and the licenses required, what information is required to, to grant a license to sell draft beer. And I think it's actually people selling it by the keg, to sell keg beer. And then they, they buy the keg and they can sell it off the town. But.
Could you not, on your act, ask for it to limit retail sales of kegs to the poni campaigner size, which I think is equivalent to a case to where a convenience store is wanting to sell kegs of beer, but don't sell pons?
Well, I don't think that you have to, and answering your question, I don't think that you have to give everyone who, who sells beer a license to sell keg beer.
But that would limit like, you know, having somebody come in behind a twenty-five gallon.
I think maybe you can, you can limit it to where the only people that can sell it are certain type establishments that are selling it on tap, individual quantities versus, my point about the kegs were, is that technically, as I understand it, if you've got a distributor in Tuscaloosa and, and I went down to Tuscaloosa bought a keg of beer and brought it back to Winfield, having possession of that keg of beer in Winfield is a violation, even though we sell alcohol, I don't think I can possess that in Winfield because it's not covered. Once you allow draft beer sales and you allow the owner, you know, purchasing keg beer, I, I think that a private citizen could go to a place and buy a keg of beer and bring it back in possession of that keg of beer is not a violation either.
Could be linked to business only?
That's what I was, I'm.
The sale. I think you could the sale, but as far as, if I personally, if we allow draft beer sales, which involves buying kegs of beer, I think it might be hard to tell Todd that I can't go to the same place in Tuscaloosa and buy it and have it in my house if I want to partake of it myself. And I couldn't necessarily sell it, have people over and sell it unless I got a license, but I think I could, I think I could consume it. Could possess it, consume it in my home.
But you can't now legally because of size of it?
It's because of the size. Now, that's my understanding. I haven't gone back and looked at all this. I'm glad I'm getting some nods from the police chief back there because
That's my understanding.
I haven't, I haven't researched that deep into it, but that's my understanding.
Well, my problem with selling draft is they gonna drink it and they gonna get their car and drive. More, more likely than if they're buying six pack or a case of beer. They gonna get to somebody's house and watch a ballgame by kegs. That's just my feeling.
What would be the home for together at the house? I mean, if each one brought a case of beer apiece, it'd be kind of the same difference if they'd go to their house.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's not about the house. They're all gonna drink and they're all gonna get in their car and drive. Which they, they could do that anyway.
Has anybody got any other complimentary questions for Todd about it? I just, I, that's, I just, I need to know if you got some, you got a question?
Yes, if a, if a restaurant were to come here that sells draft beer and we would have to wait a year before we could bring it up again, that could have been the restaurant coming over?
Right. You know, you take, I mean, I'm usually, I'm gonna use a restaurant for instance, probably.
I think.
Buffalo law, when you sell, acquire, I mean, they have to sell draft beer if they want to locate it. If you don't, if we don't act on it to say that a restaurant can sell draft beer, because right now they can't buy a license here to sell it, you would have to wait till you got it into legislation to get it okay to sell a license to sell draft beer. You can do it.
Is that one to comment?
It's required for the restaurant that they do it, you're good with it.
Todd, think about it.
I just don't know, the only reason I want to bring it on this council meeting, I think it's got to get entered pretty quick to get in this session. I know you have, it's doing it for Holiday Inn and they, they're, they've already to get it in it, but I'm just going to kind of ask the council if that's something that they want to move forward with, you know, to us, to get Todd to get in contact with the right legislators to okay for the city of Winfield to pass legislation for us to be able to sell, to sell a license for a restaurant to be able to sell draft beer or not.
Mayor, where am I with the deadline on needing to know?
When it gets in this session, I don't want to win the last, when's the last day of this session if you want to get it in?
I'm not sure what the deadline is.
How many more legislative days they have on this session?
I don't know how many days they've got left. I know that they're already in session.
I mean, for me, I would like to let the alcohol committee, you know, let them look at it and get their thoughts based on this what happened then. I mean, they were in favor of this. We agree with them on this. I would like to get a recommendation from them and say their, get their thoughts on what they can do.
That kind of, when I send that on there for the Hampton Inn, it kind of, it kind of made me wonder if they, if they are thinking that that's going to allow them to do the same thing. Sandy, you did the, at the alcohol committee meeting, Hampton Inn didn't any kind of way insinuate or kind of think that they'd be able to sell draft beer or buy that license they were buying, did they?
No, their, their beer and wine will be in stores like the smaller refrigerators behind their counter, so it won't be any type of drag. It'll be.
I mean, that's what, I mean, I'm okay with that's what you want to do is send it, send it to the alcohol committee and let them kind of make it. I just don't know how many days it's going to be in session. Well, you talk about this for restaurants. And we'll make that just. I mean, I think we can set it anyway. We want to, like Todd said, he put forth a legality if somebody purchasing it. In Birmingham, if we allow a restaurant to sell it, he said that it, I mean, I don't see, I don't, Todd's saying that he, he could come into town with it, bring it to his house if we allowed a restaurant to sell it by the keg. I don't know how big a keg is, twenty pounds, is it, I mean, a twenty gallon or, I don't know what a keg is.
Fifteen gallon.
Fifteen gallon?
But now, I don't, I don't want everybody to think what I was saying. Just because you can do that, I don't think that authorizing draft beer sales and changing your ordinance is going to allow Max Minnickmore that sells beer to sell kegs. You know, offer kegs. I, I don't think, I don't think that's the way it happens. What I, but what I'm saying is I, I, if, if, I'm not sure that you can limit the, the possession of a keg to a restaurant versus a private individual that just wants to go to, and get one. I'm not sure that would be a violation of some of our ordinance. For me to have one in my house, if I wanted to put some on path in my house and have a little thing, I could, I could probably, which right now, I don't think I can do that, can't achieve.
You got to transport it to get there and that's what you need to transport that much alcohol.
Even if, even if a big restaurant runs yourself, I mean, sells draft beer, it's still illegal to haul. I mean, what's the law about going, how many cases of beer can you buy at the store to carry your house? Is there a law about that?
Yeah, that's, it's two and a half, two and a half cases.
Yeah, but I, I think that would, I think that would be different if you said that, if you okayed this through legislation. I believe we changed.
I think the end of this, what, what.
So you say that if a restaurant makes, if they sell draft beer, that it would up the limit to how much you could haul?
I think that, I think that we, I think that if y'all did say that we want okay for a restaurant to sell it, a sports grill or wherever, I think, I think we could limit to that being the only, I think we could limit the license to restaurants on it. I don't think that we'd have to open it up for.
Jim Seventeen.
Jim Seventeen.
Yeah.
So we mean, if you want, if you want to send it, then maybe ask what the alcohol committee.
Yeah, I mean, it is different from, you know, just we have a beer and wine, you know, and we're discussing draft beer. I mean, I would like to hear what their thoughts. And that's just me, but.
I agree.
How would we tax it? Would we do tax for the, for the restaurant by the keg? Would you tax that keg then?
I think, I think we'd see how, I'd get Todd to check, see how, how the other municipalities is doing. And I think we'd just kind of do what we do with, with the other, by the state guidelines of what we go by now. And I think that's how we would try to come up with our fund, basically how somebody else is taxing.
Just a little blurb here. There may be a, there may be, I don't know if it passed or not, but the, the state of Alabama may have a, may have passed, because here's a little blurb that I found on the internet. If the bill passed, if, if this bill passed, private keg parties would be illegal because retailers that sell alcohol could not sell, couldn't, can't sell kegs to individuals. So, you know, my concern may be have been alleviated by the state law because there was some push to prevent that from happening, where keep that happening where you couldn't buy, individuals couldn't buy kegs of beer, retailers couldn't sell it to individuals. So, you know, that's what, that may have been addressed already by the state of Alabama.
I mean, I, I don't know, like I said, I'm a little bit out of line here, but somebody, I remember back in the day, somebody said they want to have a keg party, you know, so and so's are doing this. Now, where'd they get that keg at?
Well, they bought it. But what I'm saying is recently the Alabama Senate, the Alabama Senate has addressed that issue. And apparently, the state of Alabama may have passed, it may have passed a law that says, passed legislation that said, sell draft beer and kegs of five gallon or more, you can't sell them to individuals. So it's maybe what, you know, what, Oden was talking about, those little tony kegs is the only thing that an individual can buy there. You can't buy those big service kegs anymore.
See, I think hauling would, would have been the issue even then.
Yeah.
You know, you can, you probably could have bought it, but you, you've still got to get it from A to B. And that's it.
So that may be something that has already been addressed. It's not a concern.
We have that act on our, for the meeting tonight. You got to learn, you got to advertise it for a couple of weeks. Once you decide, you got to advertise it for a week, that you're going to do that until we have, you know, we have approximately enough money with nothing else we're going to move forward with. We advertise for a week before we end that session. Is that what y'all, that what the council wants to do?
I mean, that could be my recommendation, Mayor.
I agree. Tina? I know you, what you, everybody wants.
Yeah, I agree.
Put that on, Sandy, if you will, put that on alcohol committee agenda. I just want you to know where we stand. I've had, I've been questioned about it. Next item on agenda is local boards. Everybody should have a copy of this board, the boards that we have. What we want to do is some of these, some of these, if you look at the dates on them, we've not done anything with these boards. I need to, y'all, I want to bring it to your attention. You can kind of keep, take this list, we can kind of go over them and highlight it. I guess the main thing is, does it do, we won't keep these boards, keep the boards that we've not been, that's not been active, the boards have not, have not been active. If we want to keep those, and we need to, you know, if we are going to keep them active, we got to notify these people that's on here and make sure that they're, you know, still willing to, which now, if you'll see there's one or two owners deceased, well, I see two right there.
That you see.
You know, we need to know if we're going to keep these boards or not. Well, I don't know, Todd, that we've not used any of these boards in my time as mayor. And Todd can relate, can add to whether or not, if these boards have ever been used in the city and we can answer the question whether or not. Keep going with the boards. We need, if we do, we need to contact these people and see if they still serve them. If we're going to keep them open.
They are on the copy of this.
Everybody's got a copy of the letter on the backside of it that we sent out if you want to keep, continue to keep a note board. It's like housing code abatement board established in two thousand and two. I mean, I don't know that, that that's been used.
Well, we don't have building inspector and building coach involved there. So that, that was what that was set up for.
Todd, what about the medical clinic?
I, I was, that was one I was looking at earlier, Mayor. I don't know why we would need the medical clinic board.
As you can see, everybody's on the two thousand and one industrial development board that was established in two thousand and one. All those people there are still residents, I believe, in Winfield, but their terms, the latest term run out in two thousand and seven, twelve years ago. And I need, I mean, if we're going to keep that board, we need to up the board members, you know, we need to, and we just needed to decide whether or not they board are necessary.
My feeling is if they hadn't been met for last year. My feeling is if they hadn't met in the last year, we don't need them.
You, have you ever, Todd, in your time as city attorney, have you, have you had to call on any of these boards? Or is there a requirement that we keep these boards for whatever reason? Or is there a requirement that we keep these boards for whatever reason?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I'm looking at several of them, we, we, we're gonna have to keep, I mean, but, uh... Are any of them required by law?
That's, that would run.
I, I don't, I don't know. I know the theater board was a board we created by statute, uh, we got a local act passed, uh, and the the weed junk and litter abatement board, we need to keep it. The housing code abatement board, we, we've done away with, uh, building codes, we don't have a building inspector anymore, so I don't see a need for that. Northwest Department of Mental Health. Uh, some of these boards, Mayor, were created by ordinances that we adopted, uh, that, that required a board be created. I don't ever, i- i- in, in, in my years, since it was created in two thousand and one, I don't remember ever doing anything with industrial development board.
The only thing that I, the reason I think that we might need to check, make sure that we're not, a reason, a legal reason to have it, but I'm wondering if it's a grant, if any grant monies, if some of it, like the industrial boards, if it was to, if it's on him. If some of these boards wasn't required to have to, uh, bill to apply for certain grants. We would need public contact, Northwest Department of Mental Health, and see what the status is of that. If anything, the council, uh... I just wanna bring this to you, if you, if you got any, if you don't have any, comments on right now, we can, we can check into your phone and see if there's any of them required to have. If not, maybe, and then send that letter that we showed you on the back, see if they have the board that we're gonna keep, and see if we can't get the boards more act, be more active, uh, more up to date. Back to the next council meeting. We'll take them up to the end, y'all kinda. We'll get, I'll get Todd to check and see if there's any of these that's required for us to have. I'm only, I'm only to ask to, um, go into executive session just for about ten minutes, and we'll come back and we'll, we'll take action on these other, uh, other items on the agenda, discuss possible investment for the city and for an individual. I need to, I need to ask if we, y'all, go into the executive session for about ten, fifteen minutes. Second. I want to, we're, we're just gonna be quick, we'll be right back. All right, next item on the agenda is old business. I need to ask, anybody's got any old business? No, I've got, we've had a, had something come up between the time of the council. We've gone to the agenda till now, we've had a park person to resign, and Gina has asked me to let her hold that position. You wanna elaborate a little bit on it, me too?
Sure, he's tiring round. He's been a really good little employee, but he's got some personal issues that he needs to take care of, and he's thanked us for working at the park for so many years, but he's moving on somewhere. Not another job, but he's taking a break for a while, and, um, he stays for works four hundred hours a season, and I'd like to post that if I could.
You have the council to care about, let her know.
Yeah.
If she gonna post that, we have, have to act on it. All right, oh, she gonna post that, and you're gonna try to have a recommendation for the next council meeting?
Yes, sir.
So, let's see, I'm gonna try to, across the crowd, make sure I'm not forgetting nothing else. That really happened. Brett, uh, let me see. Is anything else there? You guys need to announce this?
No.
Anything about that? We need to bring this up on the, uh, there. If you don't have any, you don't have it, you, oh, I don't have anything from your department.
Uh, we haven't, we haven't circulated this among the council yet, have we?
They haven't. They just now have it.
Oh, well, Mayor, this was, yeah, well, they don't, we don't need to do this, we don't need to do this tonight. This was that, this was that record rotation going over, until they have a chance to renew it, we don't need to.
We may have, like, first item on the agenda is two, third, second item.
No, Todd sent that for you all to read it.
I was sure, I thought you got it on my side.
That's my copy.
And the chief's already signed, you, you've already signed off on that.
I didn't see if you wanted to say anything.
Uh, I, I've got, why don't you?
That ordinance, we haven't put the numbers in.
Yes.
But the ordinance itself, and, and the form of it and everything, you're okay with that? But we've got some numbers that we've gotta go in, put in based on what the state rotation numbers are.
Right.
We're gonna use that.
Good.
Okay.
I spoke to Brett earlier today, after this week. He, he, he may be having a position come open, is that, I mean?
That's true.
Um, I need to let him, uh, seek it, I need to let him bring up, see if we can go ahead and authorize the replacement of the position that's supposed to come over. Y'all don't have that, is it?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I had to be careful with announcing things that's not ready to be announced for her, but I need Brett, if you will, to come up here and...
Yes. I, and I apologize, I, I lost the week, I don't know if it's old age or, boy, but when I was going to the, I was thinking we had city council next week, when I was going to the summit last week. But I'm, I'm, I'm losing an officer to retire. His last day, twenty eighth, his last working day of twenty eighth.
Of this month?
Of this month. Yes, sir. And I've had open applications that I've, that I've been taking for certified law enforcement officers. And I've got one that's come in that, that, uh, I think would be a good fit for us. His name is Stephen Robert Thompson from Burnham, he's been there twenty-three years. He's a lieutenant. He's got a BS degree from Auburn.
Why's he won't leave that for twenty-three years?
Money and environment. I've known him my whole law enforcement career. He's been the police coordinator, or the, I'm sorry, training coordinator since two thousand and fifty. Got a lot of contact. I've talked to him in there twice, and, uh, he, the fire just went a night dream around.
The reason he wanted to go ahead and thank him right up now, where he could work out notice, and it'd be about the same time as the retirement officer could.
I don't lose, that way I don't lose any time.
You, you're making a recommendation that you hire, we hire this guy in the places where we're leaving.
Yes, sir, and he'll be, he'll be working out of notice if he's late, and see, but I can go ahead and get his uniforms and make the, actually that way I don't, I don't miss any time.
I recommend that we go with Brett's recommendation. I, I don't have no, until we have a problem with what he's doing, far as hires, I think that we're doing a pretty decent job doing interviews and hiring, uh, will please of officers that he's put on in the last two years, three years, I mean, I bet that they're in a fine job. Doing a workful job, you and him.
Card is coming a long way. I appreciate it, I appreciate it. I'm gonna show you the other side of the world.
I'm gonna ask him, to go by his recommendation to, oh, go ahead and let this guy turn in a notice for him. All in favor? Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Just to bring you up to speed a little bit now, uh, which I think we're okay, but we never did do anything with that unit that they had at the library, but I think we're okay with that until winter. But we, we've got a twelve twenty unit that went out up there during the heat, during the winters. But I think the air conditioning, best of my knowledge, is, is, Mike, do you, are you familiar with that? Uh, are you, do, I've had to a treat, if I've had the gas district looking at it, and I've talked with Alabama Fire and different ones trying to get help on assistance on replacing that unit, and we've just been back and forth, but we still gotta use out.
So is it electric or gas?
It's, uh, split.
Yeah, split.
It's split. It wasn't, it's split.
Yeah, it's a nasty make.
The unit that did both is, don't they?
Oh, it's just, the, the heat's gas and the cooling's electric.
Okay.
That's why I think we're okay with the cooling, but we've gotta do something before next winter. Uh, I think we need to do something before next winter because we don't need wakes, but we may end up having a bad winter one of these days, get rid of some bugs, maybe two. Uh, I don't, I don't, I don't think I've got any other old business that go, I don't have any other business. I need to ask for a motion to pay the bills then. All in favor, I mean, I have ten seconds, all in favor. Need to ask for a motion to adjourn. Say, all in favor? That hurts with.